Meeting to order for December 15, 2015. We're going to start right off the bat with a soy board meeting. You've got a much greater here, but you've got another meeting, right?
Well, fortunately, now I ended up getting postponed, so I'm good, but expedience is always appreciated.
So we're going to go with soy board right now?
Yeah.
All right, just so everybody knows, Paul Sadek, I'm recording the soy board meeting because our administrative assistant secretary could not be here tonight. So I'll open the soy board meeting of the town of Freetown at 6:02. Present soy board members, Mr. Baumgarten, Mr. Pacheco, myself, Paul Sadek, Kevin Missmaris, and we have one person isn't here. All right, on the agenda tonight, we have the approval of seven properties renewing of soy board permits. These permits have been long-standing soy board permits, and each year we do an inspection of the property, and then we have to approve the permits. So the permits are permit number 533 Copacabana Road, property is owned by Peter Borges. Permit number 535 Copacabana Road, property of Kenny Resendes. Permit number 527 South Main Street, property of Mr. Kenny Resendes. Permit number 0536 Slavbridge Road, property of Kenny Resendes. 0530 Chase Road, property of John Mellow. Property, permit number 0529 Brayley Road, property of John Mellow. And 0528 Dr. Brayley Road, and the property, the operator is Kenny Resendes, the property is Dick.
Spencer.
Spencer. I couldn't remember.
We always get them.
Dick Spencer.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any, we had performed the inspection, we found absolutely no issues with any of the properties. I would entertain a motion to approve the permits.
You want to do them all in mass? Do them all at once?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just read them all. Everybody has paid their tipping fee.
I was hoping to ask that.
I spoke with Nadine, she said that all the bonds are in place, all the tipping fees are in place, the permit fees and application fees have all been.
Everything's done, everything's up to snuff.
And everything looks good.
The inspection, quite honestly, in some instances, there's not much work at all going on, but Paul and I went out and looked, and Nadine was there. It's the best that most of them have looked in a long time.
Oh, good.
So, yeah, I have no issue, so I'll make a motion that we approve all the aforementioned permits.
Okay, motion made and seconded, approve the permits that we just read. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, second order of business is Nadine for payroll summary sheet for seven and a quarter hours. I have a motion to pay it, and your amount is $130.07.
Make motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all we have to do is John Henry this. Pass this around, and then we have to sign up on the permits, and we're good to go.
Don't forget to sign the top cover.
Certainly so.
If I don't keep track in my mind, I will lose track, and then I'll be signing these twice.
I almost thought you were going to say, if I can't, if I don't keep track of you, and that would not have been a good thing.
No, well, on TV, we're being recorded. I crossed you once, I don't need that, cost me fifty something dollars in flowers, I'm not doing that again. And I was set up.
Yeah, you were.
Do you have to sign the second sheet on this?
Yes, yes, yeah, I can just sign the top. Dude, you can actually read your signature, Paul.
Yeah, amazing, yeah? That's what happens when you.
Why, not so much?
Mine never.
He also has things like mine, there's just too many letters to write. You need to sign these.
Larry's was the worst. Well, it was bad. Are we good, how are you?
So, for the signature, I think.
We're good to go?
Yeah, what are you going to do with the rest of your night?
Go home and work on my bitch.
There you go. Is there any other business to be brought up before the soy board?
No.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
For a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn the soy board meeting. Once Mr. Baumgarten finishes signing.
I'll bring that to you later.
Tell her I'll get that to her. I'll polish that.
You want to work? Can you do it, can you do it? I'm not at work.
Yeah, I'll bring it over.
I hope you're going to be there on, we're going to be there on Christmas.
I should be, yeah.
At least Sunday afternoon.
That's a.
Party.
Yeah, a party, yeah, yeah.
It's Thursday, isn't it?
Yeah, and then Friday's the reps' party.
Yeah.
I have a kind of stress test.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, I should, I should be studying hard.
All right, that's it?
Yeah. Do we have, oh, I'm sorry, we haven't called a motion to adjourn yet, right?
Right, you know why? You're going to have minutes in a second, because, no, you won't have my, I'm recording them, and then I'm looking for my agenda, my whole agenda, that's it, that's the rest of the meeting.
There was no soy board minutes, then?
No, from last time, no, no, yeah, it's been a while. Okay, so, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Kevin, all yours.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Kevin.
You guys are welcome.
Have a good night.
Good night, guys.
All right.
Have fun.
Let's take care of that, doesn't it?
Moving on, 6:15, we're a little early, but.
Yeah, we can go right to do some of the.
Yeah, various.
No, we can do some of these over here, because those all have times, too.
That's true.
So we can do, except.
These are all timed, we don't want to start a public meeting unless somebody walks in the door, we'd have to start it again, so we're just going to skip and do something else. We can talk about, we can take actions relative to accepting a donation of a flagpole from Mr. Paul Barbada. Paul here?
This Paul is.
Thanks, Paul.
Mr. Barbada was offered to give us a flagpole, forty-foot flagpole, let me look here.
Where's it going?
Oh, no.
Aluminum and magnesium flagpole, forty-five feet with hardware for ground support. Its approximate value is $3,500.
Well, I think they will put it in the playground.
Yes.
Is that legal?
Sure.
Okay. No, I know it's legal to have donations, but I didn't know if it was legal, because there was a relationship there. So that part, I don't know.
Paula lives in a different time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he lives in Foxborough.
Paul?
I make a motion to accept the donation.
I'll second.
The motion made and seconded to accept a donation of a flagpole. I made it for Mr. Paul Barbada, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
I'll vote aye, if the motion passes. We have time to do the administrators' report.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Boyd, in my report this week, I urge you to, first, urge you to go to the Hathaway Park Playground, if you haven't been there, well, it's being used in this incredibly warm weather by parents and children, and it's amazing to see. It's good.
We did good.
We do have a small balance in the account of just over $5,000. We should probably try to raise more funds for benches and a small sign, and an ongoing maintenance fund, because there is going to be a need to continually maintain this and any other, any other features we might add to the park. Just for food to thought. Solar credits, the NRG formerly Borrego Project in Karma is ready for commercial operation or soon will be. That should happen before the new year. This will trigger a further reduction in the electric bills of all town buildings. You have, you have before you tonight an estoppel agreement. They have a new investor, JP Morgan, in the project, and an estoppel agreement basically is a recitation of the features of the agreement that we have with them, basically saying that they are in compliance with the contract that they entered into. Town Council Richard Hollig has reviewed that and approved it for signing with one exception. We have, as part of that contract, you may recall, a requirement that they install a kiosk at the school, at the elementary school, so that it can become a learning tool for the students.
Right.
Interactive software on that kiosk.
And that was to show everybody how much power was generated.
Yeah, and the kinds of things that sort of enables us to save money on. And so they have not yet installed that kiosk, and so that's one element of their contract that they haven't yet performed before they go into operation. They, as I said earlier, they're operating, they plan to be operational, could be operational this month. So Town Council advised us to get a letter that would allow for the extension of a ninety-day extension of complying with that. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with an NRG representative, Borrego Solar Project NRG, and the NRG representative is going to be meeting with me at the elementary school, with the principal, and with the knowledge of the superintendent, of course, and with the building maintenance person, Bob Schumacher. And we're going to be discussing where and where we want to place it, and what we want, what we want that software to look like. There's a number of different options, and one of them, I talked to the Plymouth Public School system, the gentleman who is responsible for this aspect of the program. Plymouth powers 100% of the schools, all of their schools, big town, I'm not sure how many schools there are, but there are a lot. They have two high schools, north and south, but they power their entire system with solar. And they own so many projects that they are selling power to the town, total power to the town. So they, they're heavy into this, and they have, they have interactive program that's web-based and goes to all of, every single monitor in the system, so that any student using one of those monitors can ring up and, and look at and utilize and find out what's been happening, and how much money they've saved, and a whole bunch of other information, whenever they want to. So that's one other option that we might be able to bag out of them, since they, they own this to us. So it's an exciting time, and we have received a letter from NRG indicating that they acknowledge that obligation, and all have talked about that. In the last bullet, provider acknowledges its obligation under the agreement is amended to install a public monitoring display kiosk, and confirms the parties have agreed to extend the date by which that installation shall occur to within ninety days after the commercial operation, if commercial operation deadline.
What is the commercial operation date?
Yeah, we don't know for sure, but they'd like it to be the 22nd.
Okay.
That's next week, December.
Okay, of December.
But it could be a week later, it could be the Tuesday after. But, so that's why I sent it, within ninety days of that date.
When are we going to get that date?
Well, we don't really need that date, what we need to.
Well, because this, this is, this thing that you're talking about, this project, is ninety days after the commercial operation date.
That's their deadline.
So it keeps pushing forward, right, so every time you push that deadline, then the ninety days pushes forward, so I'm trying to just nail that down a little bit.
Their objective is to, is to make that the time between now and the commercial operation date.
Okay.
As short as possible, because they don't make it in wait.
So at our next meeting, can you let us know, or can you just send us an email?
Sure.
Okay, when that date is going to be?
Yeah.
Because then we know that ninety days from that date is when we can expect the rest of this to be carried for.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You going to get that date tomorrow?
No, I won't be able to get them. They have to apply, I guess, to the DPU, demonstrate they've done all the things they need to do in order to get permission to go operational.
Well, that's one thing they haven't done, right?
Well, there's one thing they haven't done, but we're agreeing that, yeah, that's the kiosk.
Okay.
But we're agreeing, and they're agreeing, that they're within ninety days of that operational date.
Yep.
It'll be done, all right? So we're going to get as much as we can in terms of functionality out of them, and that's the push. So we can use the little time in order to get the best operational functionality in the system, all right?
We have to go back to the other meeting.
Hold your thoughts.
That's fine.
All right, 6:15, we have some public meetings to discuss about, to discuss the name changes. At 6:15, we have a public meeting for a name change to DB Fabrications, Inc., Doing Business as Bugs Stevens at 190 Slavbridge Road. Anybody here representing Mr. Stevens? Could you come up, sit, and talk about this? And identify yourself to the camera, please, so they'll make you a movie star.
Yeah. David Bergman.
Thank you. So tell her, Robin Bergman. Hi, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good.
Questions?
No.
Paul?
What, why do you, why do you mean the name change?
Uh, my father's getting out and transferring it over to me. Going to continue basically as is, try to build it back up.
Who does this gentleman remind you of, Paul? You've got a twin named Jimmy Ebert, who lives in Darkwood. I was going to show you, you know, I was sitting here saying, I think I've known him my whole life.
Very close, very close.
That's for his brother. Anyway, that'd be.
I don't know who's the Ebert twin then. Well, he's my ear, so we'll say it's him.
I'll make a motion to approve the name change to DB Fabrication, Doing Business as Bugs Stevens at 190 Slavbridge Road.
Second.
The motion made and seconded to put the name change to DB Fabrications, Inc., Doing Business as Bugs Stevens at 190 Slavbridge Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, congratulations.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, it's easy. Yes, you can go. No, it's nice if you go. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Good night, gentlemen.
Bye.
You want to continue, you've got, you want to continue, you've got.
We have four minutes.
Four minutes to continue.
That's it?
Right?
Okay. We'll just keep jumping back and forth, right?
Well, this is important, the next one, because I've received a lot of phone calls on this.
Okay.
So if you can explain it, and then that way maybe some people will stop.
Okay, well, we do need to sign the estoppel agreement. Do you want to take a motion to execute that agreement?
Your motion to sign the estoppel agreement?
We need to sign this because, why? Because of the change?
Yeah, well, no, the estoppel agreement is, the estoppel agreement, that's not the estoppel agreement. The estoppel agreement, they have that, they got that in the back.
No, this is because they changed.
That's what I just asked. That's what I just asked, okay, for the change. You follow me?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I asked that question.
Okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion to.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Energy aggregation program is the one you may be getting calls about. I alerted you, I've been sending you information right along on the program, and alerting you to the fact that the opt-out letters would be going out, and that you might be getting some phone calls. Let me back up a minute and just say that 23 towns, including Freetown, through the board's approval, are in the process of aggregating all of our residents and small businesses' power use, and we've got DPU's approval to go out to bid to see if we could get a lower bid than the utility, EverSource, for the power element of the, our residents and small businesses' bills. And we did. EverSource's current rate is 10.89 cents, I believe, and we had two bids, and one of them, the low bid was from ConEd Solutions. The ConEd Solutions bid was 9.49 cents. So the, the way this works is that come January, they'll read the meters for the first time, ConEd Solutions will be the supplier of power at the 9.49 cent rate per kilowatt hour. Now, the, any resident could opt out of the program, in fact, you can opt out at any time during the 24-month period. This 9.49 cents is fixed at that rate for the full 24 months. EverSource, as you probably know, can increase their rates every six months, and usually do. Occasionally, they'll lower it, but more often, they increase it. And so if you opt out, then you're not going to get the benefit of the lower rate, if you opt out now. Opt-out letters have been sent to our residents at this point, and we're getting telephone calls asking what this is all about. The letter, unfortunately, comes from ConEdison Solutions, ConEd Solutions, and they're in New York State, Connecticut. So the return addresses in New York. And so many residents look at that and say, well, gee, this can't be real. It's real. This is a real opportunity to save a bundle of money. And so the question, one of the questions that's come up is, well, what if, if EverSource now reduces the rate below 9.49? Well, they could do that, but six months later, they could increase it again above 9.49.
We're going to have to go back to the regular meeting here.
Yeah, okay.
Just a point of interest, I meant, if I took this, my year's worth of bills, my house, and multiplied them times the energy generation cost times 9.5, and we had this in place, it would have saved me 340 bucks, me, just me. So if you opt out, think long and hard, but you can always opt back in again, you know?
You can't.
We're going to go back to the public meeting.
You can't opt back, you cannot opt back yet.
You can.
I'll get, I'll pick up that one.
You can't.
You can't, you can opt out.
But you can't.
But you can't opt back yet.
Okay, I agree. Okay, let's go back to the 6:25 public meeting for a name change for Millis Industries, Inc., Doing Business as Pick 'n Pull, 65 Chase Road. Identify yourself, gentlemen, on the way by, please.
Name is Bob Veltjes. The owner of Millis Industries started there in 1998, and I sold to Schnitzer Steel in 2012, and I've continued to work with them and do some consulting for them.
And I'm Colin Kelly.
And the reason for the name change?
The, for the name change is because they're restructuring how they're going to do business. Instead of having a self-serve yard, they're going to restructure more with scrap, in and out, as they, as they were doing, because they have both licenses, you know, using the rail spur, and also handling automobiles for parts, but not having it in the same fashion that they changed to for a two-year period.
And additionally, we had two retirees from the company that were listed on the license.
Okay, so they retired. Questions?
So no more, you can't buy parts there anymore?
Eventually, you'll be able to buy parts, but they're not going to be the exact same program that they had where the pots would be, so you go in and take your own pots off.
Okay. Would this be a different type of license?
No, it still should be a class two.
They have class two, and they have a junkyard license. They would, okay.
We have the auto graveyard and the class three.
No white recyclables?
Yes, we have done scrap before with the recyclables, we tend to do the same type, we encompass all the scrap.
Okay.
And the use of the, you know, the rail and the scale upfront, you know, basically the same operation. When I had started, we had it that we would take pots off, and the people could go and take their own pots off. When I sold it, Pick 'n Pull, Millis Industries, Doing Business as Pick 'n Pull, made it basically just that people had to take their own pots off, and they shut that operation down, and they want to, you know, restructure and reopen it again as, you know, as a different model.
So is that why when you call the Pick 'n Pull number, it says no longer in service?
Yes, but they have, we do have two other facilities, one in Campbell, Rhode Island, and one in Johnson, Rhode Island, that they're still running in that fashion. I had another operation in Millis, it was Millis Industries Auto, and they changed that to the Pick 'n Pull model, and they also, in that area, they, they closed that one, is that, and they're restructuring the same thing, they're going to do the scrap with the scale, they're going to bring in automobiles, scrap the automobiles, but also they will sell parts, but if they sell a pot, they're going to take it off, meaning the company.
So are you going to have a supplier pots all the time?
They'll have what comes in, they're not going to buy necessarily late model, they'll buy, you know, end-of-life vehicles, they'll buy end-of-life vehicles from the auction, you know, those types of vehicles.
So the majority of the work is to get rid of the scrap?
Yeah, the scrap, to feed, to feed the shredder in Everett.
Yep.
We have a automobile shredder in Everett.
There's no shredding being done there?
No, no, there never was, you know, we.
But that's not going to happen?
No, no.
I'll make a motion to approve the name change for Millis Industries Incorporated, Doing Business as Pick 'n Pull, 65 Chase Road.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to change the name from Millis Industries, Inc., Doing Business as Pick 'n Pull at 65 Chase Road in Freetown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've got a question for you guys.
Yes.
This stuff's right here. They're going to be noisy out back during the process?
We're going to, it'll be the same operation, I've been there since 98, we, you know, we won't have any different equipment, same type of equipment, we were all. We were always good neighbors, we intend to be good neighbors, we wouldn't wanna disturb anybody in the neighborhood.
We just asked them if they're not crushing over here and they're not compacting, they're not doing that.
Because once in a while, we, I know what you're saying about, we're the neighbors and we hear it's crushing and all that, it's coming from that area. So there's noise coming from it. There's noises.
When did, when did you hear noise?
Just a few weeks ago.
No, 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 not a few, that's two years ago. Yeah, but a few weeks ago it's the rail tracks.
I think there's other stuff going on.
No, nothing going on.
We can send by the zoning enforcement.
Yep.
To go by and check occasionally, just to ensure that there isn't any of that going on?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I live right behind that.
Okay, but you just said a year ago and you just said two weeks ago.
A few months ago.
Hold on, hold on. One at a time.
Okay.
If you want to speak, just let me know and we'll address it, so.
So, yeah, one gentleman, can you just, one gentleman said a year ago and one said.
A few months ago. This has happened a few months ago. Yes, it did.
It's not from them.
It's, I'm not saying from them, it's from something that's happened.
Okay, so we will send the zoning enforcement, aid, uh, person over there and to see where the noise might be coming from and then we can address that at that point because, look, we have to take everything at face value, right? We just asked them if they were gonna do any crushing or anything like that and they said no. So, so now it's on record, they said no, and go ahead.
Just to be clear, I said we wouldn't do, weren't gonna do any shredding.
Shredding.
Since nineteen ninety-eight.
Since ninety-three.
Well, since ninety-three, I was there since ninety-eight and since, and I'm speaking since ninety-eight, you can speak for ninety-three. John's the landowner. I had car crusher there, I had a, uh, a car and a, and a white goods baler there. We loaded rail cars. Were there all those years, we never had any citation from the building inspector of building apartment. If there was, if there was ever any concerns, we addressed the concern. So our history would speak for itself and we certainly don't intend to do anything that would hurt that history going forward. You know, environmentally, we never had an issue, we made improvements over the years. We spent several hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and twelve just on some new environmental things for stormwater. We have always addressed everything, we will. Schnitzer Steel has a very big commitment to the environment and to noise levels, all our machines. Not above any decibel levels that they shouldn't be. And so, I mean, I'm, you know, and if there is an issue, we're willing to address it at that time or if someone thinks there's an issue, we're willing to address it ahead of time.
I'm gonna say, we, not that I'm aware, we've never had a complaint.
And now it's a new brand with development.
That's a choice.
Right, but we didn't know that before. Now, it's gone.
Wait a minute.
This company's been here for a long time.
I agree with what you're saying.
It's been here for a long time and the fact that there's a new development there is fine. But you can't tell a company can't operate because you bought a house in that development. Okay, so, I mean, if you have issues, this is the first we've ever heard of anybody having any complaints. So if you have an issue, give the town a call and we'll set up the zoning enforcement. But just because you buy a house next to a place that's operating at a yard like this, I mean, you can't stop them from operating. They were here first and that, and they're, they're allowed to operate.
And I think that once your development starts to have the trees come in and things like that, you're gonna have more of a buffer. Right now it's all barren, you know what I mean? Because people are still building. So I think that once that takes hold, you're gonna, it's all gonna be, it'll be different over there.
Yeah, but that thing is closed.
Right.
They're closed.
Yeah.
They, they bring them, some business, they're closed, I mean, when there's dead, it's there. And they move out, somebody else is coming back to do the same business?
It's zoned that way. You have to realize that we, we went through zoning here in town, maybe you weren't here, but we went through zoning, it was approved at town meeting. So that area is actually zoned that way. So we can't take that away.
And all's we're doing is we did not close, we're remodeling, restructuring, just like if you, you'll see a restaurant. It may be the same restaurant, they remodel and then they open again. And we, and we haven't, um, we started this process in May. We just, we haven't even been a year. And we are in the process right now of restructuring, remodeling, and it, it will be open, so that you'll see it open, but we still have activity there. We have warehouses in there, we, we do bring a railcar in, we have trucks that have gone in there. So we haven't stopped everything, we just stopped what you're used to maybe seeing on an absentee basis.
Well, look, the big cheese.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna monitor it. This, this is, this is my meeting. You guys wanna meet in a neighborhood environment, I would suggest that'd be a great idea. He has a right to do business, he's been there a long time and you can just chat. I'm sure the doors are open anytime you wanna talk.
Mr. Mello has been in business in town for a very long time. He's, he can, he'll listen to you and take care of you.
I, I think honestly, I think the only noise change that's happened in the last almost year is the construction, the heavy construction, they were in a hurry, was the solar farm next door to me. And that's where the bulk of the yukes and the louder slapping on the gates, things like that. But my office is right at the railroad tracks and feel free anytime, anytime, we're there every day.
And any one of us, you can call us anytime? Please.
Their license hasn't, their license continues, their license was not suspended or anything. They're just getting a name change on the license, it's an existing license for one of their businesses. But if you have an issue, call the town.
Neighborhoods chiding works best though.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Wow, it's the only time I get to speak to you.
Moving on, the next on our agenda at six thirty, late, was a discussion with the Board of Health Agent regarding proposed new health regulations. Kevin is our health agent.
Good evening, Bob.
Can I turn it over to the Board of Health?
Paul?
Yes.
I'm gonna turn this over to you. Mr. Sadik is the chairman of the Board of Health. And any questions that anybody wants to ask, please run them through the Chair of the Board of Health. Thank you.
All right, Kevin, you're on.
All right, um, last we left off, um, going through this regulation, we had suggested we invite some individuals that pertain to these properties. We did invite these individuals and they're here tonight.
Okay, Mr. Fernandez, are you here?
Yeah.
Mr. King, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where is Mr. King? Okay, hi.
There was a proposed change in our rules, Board of Health rules, um, under the disposal of dead animals, foul, and other offensive material. And the Board of Health Agent wanted to implement an additional, um, rule. And the rule that he wanted to implement was, uh, properly tagged field dressed animals during the hunting season must be stored fifty feet away from our property lines. This is also, this also includes animal parts, carcasses, and skins. The reason that the Board of Health Agent wanted to implement this is because my understanding, and if you wanna address the Board, do so one at a, ask them to address the Board. We're gonna talk to one person at a time. Because apparently, in my estimation, there appears to be a feud going on between two neighbors. And I myself do not wanna implement additional rules and regulations that affect many hunters in Free Town because two people seem to have a feud going on. So I asked to have this meeting and the two neighbors come in because I think it's unreasonable in the situation that we have to hang dead animals to antagonize the neighbors. So.
There's no dead animals hanging.
I'll speak, I'm gonna speak for my husband.
Stop for a second.
Okay.
I'm gonna have one person talk at a time. Do you wanna talk, Mr. King? Tell me, I know there's no dead animals hanging now, but there was a situation last year, last season, where you had dead deer hanging in your driveway because your driveway happens to cut between two neighbors' property. And I saw the pictures of those dead animals hanging. Now, that wasn't dressing off deer or hanging them to cure. And I think that's a terrible thing to do myself, okay? But I don't wanna put regulations on all the rest of the good hunters in town that have, that shoot an animal and have to cure it for a little while because of this conflict that you guys have. I would like to see you guys work out your own conflicts and not have to come before the Board of Health.
Can you, um.
Now, you wanna speak to your husband?
I'm gonna speak for us. That was last year, as you mentioned. The EPOs came to our house, they asked us to take them down. My husband respects the EPOs, we took them down, there hasn't been one hanging since.
Okay.
I need to.
Listen, I don't wanna see any handshakes, she's talking.
My concern is, for twenty years, we've been hanging bones and skulls, which Kevin's seen, he said they're fine. State police said they're fine. Free Town Police said they're fine.
We're not talking about that.
Well, bones is in, bones is in here. Bones is in, bones is written in here. So that is my concern. Our neighbor has even contributed bones, they've given us cow skulls, they've given us deer skulls, they've given us coyote skulls. For twenty years, we've been putting these skulls up, so that is where I stand.
The bones that you have are not offensive because they're clean.
Well, I think that needs to be amended in there then because that's my concern.
These are, no, these are the. These are the current rules.
Right.
We don't wanna implement the second part of that.
So, so that's fine.
So as long as the bones are clean, you've never had an issue with a Board of Health Agent citing you because of the bones. It was only because you had a carcass hanging that was not.
That was last year.
Right, and you haven't done it again.
Haven't done it since.
So I guess what I'm hearing now is that you guys have worked this out, we don't have to.
We haven't worked anything out, I mean, they've still got piles of debris and dirt piled against our yard, which, you know, the town is deemed as okay. But that's, you know, we're not here to discuss that, we're here to discuss.
We're here to discuss this.
So, the bone's okay, I'm okay.
So we have no more animals, we won't have this issue any.
I can add bones though, sir.
I would say if, as long as it's clean.
Clean bones.
Yeah, because we had that one incident.
Clean bones.
We had that one incident.
Wherever I can put them on my property.
It's not, it doesn't become offensive to me, that would become more of a civil matter between the two parties. I'm looking at a.
EPO, Free Town, State Police are all fine with bones.
I'm the same way, as long as it doesn't come in. Health hazard.
Not a health hazard.
They don't smell, they don't collect flies.
Clean bones are good.
And maybe we've got UPS truck drivers that come down the driveway. I sent the email to the three of you, I hope you read it. You know, we've got UPS drivers that come down, ask, take pictures and whatnot. It's become.
We're not talking about bones here.
Okay, so then, so then we're good.
It's okay, there's no carcasses.
There's no carcasses.
And there won't be any further issues.
One carcass this year, but bones are good.
Reasonable, I would say reasonable amount of clean bones would be fine.
Kevin had mentioned to me twenty-five.
What's a reasonable amount?
I, I, what, it depends on, what do you think is reasonable?
Thirty deer a year, assuming me my group.
Okay.
So we do about thirty skulls?
And they're all legally tagged, I hunt with, I hunt with the police office, state police office, and Free Town Police Office. So I can hang bones.
You're gonna hang them?
We hang them in our trees.
They're on my trees.
Okay, you're gonna hang thirty carcasses?
No, we do thirty skulls usually.
Even have thirty skulls?
We have wind chimes made, we should, you know, Kevin's seen it, I mean.
Can I ask you a question? Do you market these things? Why?
Well, some people have actually asked us, like, for Halloween, they've asked them if they can have one of these skulls, so they take them.
Do you sell them or anything?
No, no.
No, you cannot sell them, it's illegal to sell any deer prop. Any antlers are deer. I do not sell them.
Okay, can I hear from anybody, Mr. Fernandez, do anybody wanna speak on?
I do wanna mention that it was not last year, they were probably taken down in February when the weather became too warm and they were becoming very.
But we're talking about the same issue?
Yes, yes, that is when the deers came down. They have not put them up since, however, there has been a lot more bones that have been hung. There's a lot of keep out written in bones, which they are clean, I will depend on that. But last year, there were bones right on the property line, on the property stake, that still had meat and whatnot on them.
Last year.
It was this year.
Let's, let's not.
It was this year in two thousand and fifteen.
We've got an understanding here, okay? If there's any violation, we wanna know about it because we will cite the individuals.
My question is for you is, without a law in place, if he does hang any deer carcasses or deer skins, especially by a noose, by their head, is there anything that is going to take place? Is there anything that?
My understanding from this gentleman is that that's not gonna happen any longer, you just heard him. If it happens, you call us again.
Is it you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you tell me, um, if, when you go over there and you check it out, what is the, how much is the fine? Do you give him a warning? What happens?
Yeah, the first time we had spoken, I had given him a warning and then at one point I told him, at that time, it was a hundred dollars, a hundred dollar fine. The very next day he took it down, or the same day, I think it was. But the fine is a hundred dollars.
I would like to make a recommendation because I feel like the Board isn't, you know, of the opinion that we do have a lot of hunters in town. But I also think that this is a very serious thing, okay? And we can sit here and try to be peacemakers and you guys are just not gonna get along. That's just, that's just the way it is. But I'm gonna tell you something, I would never wanna, personally, wouldn't wanna see it. So I'm gonna make this very serious. It's a two, I would propose to do a two hundred dollar fine, no warning, because you've already given them a warning, okay? So I would like to impose a two hundred dollar fine for the next time you have to go out and, and check things out and you find them in the wrong. If they're right, they're fine, I don't have a problem with that, clean bones, any bone, I, I don't know. But if you find that they're wrong, a two hundred dollar fine, I, I think that a hundred dollar fine, we're not getting anywhere.
So you're making a motion to change the fine from one hundred?
Yes, I am.
And our, and our rules and regulations?
As our, as our rules and regulations. Yes, it is.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to change our fine structure from one hundred dollars per infraction to two hundred dollars per infraction. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, and we'll issue citations accordingly.
All right, what I just wanna say, bones are good.
If he finds that you're in a, in any form, way, shape, or form, not adhering to the regulations, if you're not cleaning your bones or you're, you're doing something that's offensive and he finds you offense, doing something offensive, you have a two hundred dollar fine. So you better be cleaning your bones.
If you read the regulation, it says material that is or may become offensive, cause a nuisance or a health hazard. You got meat on bones that aren't clean, that's a health hazard.
But a clean bone's good. If I boil it, bleach it, and clean it, it's good.
That's what we're saying, Kevin?
Yep.
Okay.
Again, that would be something, if you, if they were offended, that would be something civil.
You know.
I'm offended by Jesus.
Can I just say, yeah, I mean, this offensive thing is a lot.
Again, like I said, like I said, you take it, you, it's not, it doesn't change the water health.
If neighbors got along, plain and simple.
Absolutely, you're right.
All right? So you understand?
Clean bones are good.
They came to my daughter's wedding, they came to my daughter's wedding.
All right, I'm all done with this.
Clean bones are good.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Onward and upward.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just maybe you wanna take five minutes before you go to the clock?
Yeah, why don't you wait?
I, I wanna go.
Yeah, take five minutes so you don't get into an argument.
It's okay, then no need to go outside right now.
Okay, moving on, six forty-five, we have some Board of Health variances. Ally, which one of these is one sixteen Chase Road?
Six forty-five. No, neither goes on. No, neither goes on. We, neither goes on. We don't, we don't.
Do we have to stay from the licensing rules?
No.
No, you don't have to.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure you were here, or just that, okay?
Okay. So this would be the six fifteen?
Six forty.
Six forty, seven, six forty-five, Board of Health, fairies, one sixteen Chase Road.
One sixteen Chase Road, are requesting three variances. Niall's here, he's gonna speak briefly on what's going on here. I believe all the butters have been notified?
Yes, I don't know who would like the motion. We're required.
Yeah, we're waiting for the record. Yeah, just waiting for the record. We gotta read them, okay?
I've got them here. These are, okay. The butters are Mr. Gilbert Hernandez, one eighteen Chase Road. Mr. Dennis Demorantville, one oh eight Chase Road. Mr. Jefferson, D, I think it says Deb.
Oh, Demorantville.
That's another Demorantville?
Yes.
And one twelve, one twelve Chase Road. These are the abutters. Maurice, how are you?
I'm great.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
He's also shy. He's like, don't bring attention to me.
What do we got?
For the record, Niall Zager, I'm representing Penny Perry, who is the homeowner of the property. For any of you that are familiar with property, I'd like to bend on Chase Road, that I've been, I have a cockpit to land. Do you want another one?
No, I think that's okay.
So currently, is an existing cesspool in the rear of the property. This property drops way down to, way off, very quickly, from the front to the back. This is a wet one here, this property, then we've, we've got an approval from the Conservation Commission, and plans have been signed off on by the Conservation Commission, as is. So we, we are already through now. This is the existing cesspool here. What we're proposing to do, because it's such a tight site, we're proposing to take this existing, this kind of a dilapidated, fallen-down building, that's gonna have to get taken down. Then we're doing a septic system, that's a sloping septic system, it's called a Presby system. And we're sloping it in order to mitigate the amount of fill that's going on. It just has a lot of benefits to it, we're able to do it without a pump system. We had to replumb the, we had to come out the side of the building with a new tank. Part of this approval, because the, there's an existing shallow well that would never be, never pass, it never passed a lot of the authority tests, we had to, we're proposing a new well, that would meet new current standard classified requirements. So that's proposed down here. So there's a lot involved with this, to bring it up, you know, up to state spec. In order to do that, we did have to ask for some variances, which I can read to you. And I'll explain each one as to why. A reduction of the required separation between the bodding, the proposed soil absorption system, and the estimated high groundwater table elevation from five feet, three feet, and slows the perpuration, perpulation rate less than two minutes per inch, as allowed by the Enviro Septic Approval by NAST EP. So we are, with this type of system, we're allowed to go, typically, you can go from, with a foot of reduction. With this type of system, because it's an I A system and the approval, you can go down a two-foot separation, a two-foot reduction. So if you're going from five feet, you can go to three feet. If you have four feet, which would be over two minutes per inch material, it'd be two feet. So that's one of the reasons why we use this system, it reduces the amount of impact to the rear, to the resource area. Because that's part of what's taking into account here, is that we have to look at the health hazards with the wells, and the budding wells, and we also have to look at the resource area, meaning the wet one in the rear of the property. So there's, there's a few different things that are going on here, as far as safety, I'm sorry, as far as health issues. So we felt as though asking for that variance will mitigate that, mitigate the amount of fill, that kind of, that's a... Number two, is there any questions on that? Okay. Reduction of the required setback between the proposed leaching field and existing cellar wall from twenty feet to ten feet, that's just because of the, there's an extent, this is the property line here, as you can see in the building, in order to make it fit and keep fifty feet off of the, there's a requirement here for the fifty feet from the septic system to the wet one. And in order to do that, we had to widen the system, lengthen the system, I should say. In order to do that, we had to ask for that variance. What we are doing is we're proposing a liner, an impervious liner that goes around it. This is all lower than the basement floor, so it should be absolutely no breakout into the, that's the only thing to be concerned with, is a breakout into the, into the basement. But we're gonna be below that elevation, so that, there's no, there shouldn't be really any concern to that. Okay? And, and the impervious barrier will just also help mitigate that as well. In a reduction of the required setback between the proposed leaching field and septic tank, and a wetland bordering water supply, or tributary there, to from a hundred feet to fifty feet. So when I say fifty feet before, that's for a typical wetland. When you, this is a wetland that tributary to a surface water supply, they have some more stringent standards. To do that, you can go from a local upgrade from fifty, from a hundred feet to fifty feet, what, that's what we're asking for. There's no way of getting it really any further because of the restraints on the property. We, we're doing the best we can to get it fitted in. And I'm sure Kevin can talk about, this has been a, been one that's been sitting around for a while, so he's, I know he's on board with getting this done, we tried to get it in as fast as we could, and I know the...
We're actually gonna go through the betterment program, and that'll come across through the desk.
Quick, shut the...
Yeah.
Because there's people living there, right?
Yes, Ms. Perry.
I'll make a motion to approve with the variances that stated by Mr. Zager, and for one sixteen Chase Road.
Seconded.
The only thing we need is a deed restriction, that's it.
Yes, yeah, deed restrictions with the...
Deed restrictions stating what?
It's, what is it, three thousand?
It's, uh...
It's a, no, it's a five thousand.
Five, I was gonna say, I'm gonna double check, but it does say five here, all right.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
That's just the more than five billion.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely, yes.
I have a motion made and seconded to approve the health variance for one sixteen Chase Road, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Give our best to your mom, Barbara, would you? Thank you.
Good, thank you very much.
Penny, they let you out for good for you?
Yes, I just got out. Back there again in the morning.
All right. Thank you. No, it's not those, those are nothing, the work, or the other ones that you're...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Who brings you out? Nothing better than, you don't want to watch The Voice or something?
Next on the agenda is a Board of Health variance for sixty-seven Chippaway Road.
Sixty-seven Chippaway also is requesting three variances. Mr. Schneider's here, speak briefly on what's going on there.
Mr. Schneider, what do you got?
Good evening.
Oh yes, thank you. They have all been notified?
Okay, let me read these names over here. It looks like, uh...
What is this, Chippaway?
Yeah, this looks like Colleen, Paul, and Troy.
It's Colleen, Colleen and Paul LaCroy.
And the other one is Joan and Mark Bullock.
Yep. Oh, okay, yeah, I know exactly where it is.
It's not far from you, is it?
No.
This one, this one looks busy.
A lot of stuff going on in this plant. I'll use my little plan over here as a, as a pointer, but the house is sixty-seven Chippaway Lane, Chippaway Road, located at the corner of Jackie Lane. House built back, I think, back in the late seventies maybe. And consists of, currently, the system consists of a thousand-gallon septic tank and a leaching area, some kind out in the backyard, it's not working anymore. And what we're looking to do is put in a pump chamber and install a new leaching area up on this corner to the side of the house. We've got a couple of wells over in this area, well up on this side, and a wet area on the other side of Chippaway Road, so we're gonna try to site out the system into the best, best possible area. And unfortunately, the soils, as we go back onto the, on the lot, get awful. We were able to, we've gotta tuck the system closer to the house, so the soils are better. But unfortunately, we've got a higher water table, about thirty inches down. So we're gonna end up with a, with a mounted system with a retaining wall around it. The house is existing, currently a four-bedroom house, gonna stay as a four-bedroom house. But that leaves us in two, three variances that we need from the Board. One is thirteen feet from the cellar wall to the leaching area, which we've got a poly barrier around that side of the system, which I heard discussed in the last, in the last hearing. We also have thirteen feet off the sideline for the leaching area, which the Board requires, it's twenty feet. And interestingly enough, this property has come in front of this Board twice before for a similar variance off the property line. And in the records of, it's eighty-four and then ninety-four, the Board granted a ten-foot separation off the property line, so we're, it's like we're looking to see if we've been granted twice before. Neither one of those systems, from what I understand, were installed. Here we are thirty years later, and they still need to repair their system. And then the third variance we're looking for is separation of groundwater. Because we have a water table at three feet, we're in the backyard, we're trying, two and a half feet, not three feet, trying to keep separation and height from the back to a minimum, given our, our constraints back here. So we're looking for a one-foot separation waiver from the Board. Well, remove from any wells or wet bones.
Is this septic in failure?
It's tired in past times, to be replaced.
Okay, and you're saying that the soil is bad, is it sandy soil, is that why, or is it...
It's a clay, clay ground, very tougher. And almost from, if you see this point right here, we dug a test pit here, and it jumped, moved up into this area, and it got better. You know, five feet, ten feet away.
The field, the leaching field is in bad spurt.
It's in bad soil, I think it's in the water table, honestly. In the spring.
That's when you're watching, right?
It's been there for thirty years. Springtime, summer, or in summertime, water tables will drop off, and the system's gonna function. Springtime, when it's wet, you're gonna have some problems. The idea is to get it up into some better soils, elevate it above, above the water table.
Okay.
Do the best we can.
Yeah, I have no issues with the best solution for this, so just the deed restriction again.
For what, for...
For them.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve sixty-seven Chippaway Road with the variance, well, only...
It's three. It's three variances.
All right, but only, the only restriction for, for me is the deed restriction.
Yes.
Okay.
Seconded.
I have a motion made and seconded to approve the Board of Health variance for sixty-seven Chippaway Road, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
They're gonna get it fixed, isn't it?
I hope so.
Yeah.
Certainly hope so. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Twenty-two, boy, I was just a baby back then.
Next is the Board of Health.
We were, I want to make sure the camera's seen. We were supposed to sing Happy Birthday when we started this meeting.
Oh, my God, I would have killed you. Ah, you, you are lucky you have a pink shirt on right now.
Lisa's birthday was the same as my daughter's.
Are you ready, Mom?
Thirteen.
No, wait, no.
Happy birthday to you.
I never should have said...
Happy birthday to you.
You guys are strong.
Happy birthday to Lisa.
Okay.
Happy birthday to you.
Gives hot flashes.
That was much happier than what was earlier.
I'm sure I would have got bones on my forehead.
Next on the agenda...
She's saying I have to get driveway and go.
Next on the agenda...
I'd drive home tonight, it's gonna be...
For twenty-two, Buena Vista Avenue.
Oh, no, that's Buena Vista.
We've done Buena Vista. See, he's, he's got bones on him.
I've got bones in my head there, I can't get them out.
This is better than watching Red Skeleton.
Okay, twenty-two Buena Vista Ave?
Buena Vista.
Buena Vista is also requesting three variances. Have all the abutters been notified?
They were, however, only one came back so far. These are the three names, we sent them out all at the same time. If you want to make this conditional upon the other two coming in, I'll probably be getting them back in the envelopes, because I'm suspecting these people have picked them up. So I'll get them back in you as soon as I receive them.
It's been two weeks since we set them up, so...
Jane Rigo Caillou?
Yeah, that's the one.
I looked for the receipts, and I must have put them in the wrong folder somewhere, I haven't found the receipts, if I get those added to them.
This is the engineer, Mr. Sharon, just briefly discuss what's going on there.
Brief form board with my colleague, I should have grabbed, dug before he left. This is a fairly small lot in Buena Vista, roughly a hundred by a hundred deep. The existing house is set back in, there's a hill here that's rising up, up onto the rear of the house is setting, so we're going from an elevation in the front here, about ninety, up to a ninety-seven at the front of the house. There's about a seven-foot increase in the front yard, a lot of trees in the front yard. Then it levels out a bit in the back, and ends up at a ninety-seven in the backyard. Presently, this rear section has been paved over with a proposed leaching field. This was a tennis area, a tennis, not tennis, but basketball court. So a basket, basketball court up in here. We had thought, based on the town's records, that the system came out and went off to the side, into roughly where we're showing test pit one. We were supposed to have a pit roughly in that area, so we thought that the setback from that to the existing well down here, which is one of the few active wells in the street, there's this one next door, there's one off to the rear, the others are all tied into town water, but we thought this was just an irrigation well with a twenty-five-foot setback, and that was incorrect, as it turned out. So we had done a testing up in here, which is about the only place in the backyard that we could get a machine up into. This portion is all covered with stone pavers, and it's gonna have to be disturbed in order to put a new tank in here. And this portion, they're gonna have to remove the asphalt in order to put the leaching field in here. What's happened is this lot recently went through a foreclosure, and I think it's still in bank hands. Mr. and Mrs. Cabral simply don't want to wait to get their repair done, to try to work something out, and try to even pay to make a connection into the town water line, because they simply don't have time to do that. So we talked to them, we said, well, we'll try to get it approved up in this corner, have to take out the asphalt, but unless someone else has really had their heart set on having a basketball court, probably better to have a good leaching field. So we're proposing is a new septic tank in the rear, tied into a new leaching field for the existing number of bedrooms. One of the, well, we have three variances, as Kevin said. We can't get quite ten feet off the two property lines here, with five and a half feet off of lot ninety-seven, and with sixteen off of lot one oh four. And these, these are the three who are notified because of the setback distances from there, from the three lots in this corner. In addition to that, we're four feet off of the garage. Now, the garage is slightly lower, so it's not like a slab of grade, it is, there is a change in grade in there. What we're doing is we're putting the forty mil membrane on the two sides of the system, the leaching fields facing that garage portion, so we carry that membrane down. It's like a poly power there, just, I'll call it that, so we prevent that from leaching in that direction. The soils here, contrary to the last one you just showed, the soils are just awesome, this is beautiful. This is a hill of sand that we're working right here, there's no water table. As far as you can dig, the hole keeps falling in, it's that type of light loose sand, very, very fast perforated. This is, again, less than two minutes per inch percy. We've got a leaching, I'm sorry, we've got a groundwater separation that's in excess of the five feet that's required by Title V. The thing is, we simply can't fit it in in the area that we have to accommodate the three bedrooms that they currently have. There's a third variance, and that has to do with the two test pits that we did, they're not quite in the area that we selected. Simply, we couldn't get into there, we didn't realize, we had to get that far away at that point. We thought this well again was a twenty-five-foot radius. So what we're asking here is that we get a variance on that portion of it. And typically, what happens on these is that when the, when the hole gets dug, we go out and we just do a verification inspection, and we take a look at it, just to verify that the conditions are equal where we have the other two. I don't see a change here, like I said, we're on a, we're on a hill of sands.
Where's the current leaching field?
Current leaching field, and maybe I'm back in here, I should have pointed that out, there's an existing pit, that we pumped out back there. That's it. Apparently, there was some move, again, in contrast to the last story, where it looked like there was a repair done at one point with a septic tank and a pit. So it looked like we had a tank in this area and a pit in here, that simply wasn't the case, because we, we ended up digging around and being able to do the foot tests, and there was nothing there.
A lot of these houses were just summer places.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a tight lot, plus all the pavers and everything on there. So you gotta tuck it in the corner, yeah.
If we put it in here, you know, we're expecting this well and this one, so we have no well setbacks.
Are you good with this stuff?
I'm fine with it, I guess we have to wait until we get back from the abutters.
And you're gonna put a de-restriction on this one?
This one is a three bedroom, a de-restriction.
Spoke with the owners on that, they told them to expect that, they never bump. There really isn't room on this site to add any more to the house.
That's a tight, everything on here is like well-planned out, there's no move.
I think if it were level, you'd have more room to do things, but the way it slopes off seven feet down to the street, there's really no room to.
So can they move that, sorry, can they move that asphalt over here where the test wells were? They don't have to, they don't have to keep those open, right?
No.
They can cover those up?
Yeah, they're gonna abandon the other one. Yeah, this is all filled back in, so if they, if they wanna come back in, this will get filled in here where the existing pit is, we'll put the new tank in the back, and then pipe around his fireplace, he's got a beautiful big stone fireplace, a masonry fireplace back in there, for entertaining. They will have to take up his pavers, he's got a bunch of pavers, but again, those can be taken out, we'll get the tank put back in again afterwards.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve with the variances as discussed and the de-restriction to three. A contingent on receiving those abutters notices in the mail.
Second?
Yes, second.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve the four belt variance for twenty-two Buena Vista Avenue. Do they have any favor?
Aye. And they eventually plan to connect to the water, our water.
The neighbors?
No.
This house is tight in, this house is tight in, it's just the neighbors, and again, they don't know who's gonna buy it, and we said, well, we'll probably get things done more easily, it'll be less expensive, we don't have to tear up the asphalt, they said they just didn't have time to wait for that, so.
Moving on to weekly public discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything they wanna say in weekly public discussion? I'd like to say one thing, that my term is up, in April, April the fourth, I will not be seeking reelection, so if you endeavor to be a selectman in Freetown, now's your chance. So, moving on.
Well, thank you. It's been an honor. Yes.
It is.
Buena Vista.
And I'm so usually well spoken. All right, Mr. Town Administrator, we're back.
Okay.
All right. The next item on what is Freetown Screw Site, we had a hearing on the next, the next grant application last week, and it drew two residents. And Tracy Koster and I, the engineer and I, went over the next phase with those two residents, and we've been busy trying to get the grant application filed. And we have had the worst time with this mass. It's just impossible to work. I hit the wall, I gave it to Ally Metrae and Gabe, and how many days did it work on that?
I think it went two weeks, though, to mark one.
So, but finally, we've got, we've got a file, right? So, we, we're gonna, we'll finish that process, and as you know, we are also, that will enable us to do some more removal of contaminated soil, and also do some groundwater remediation on the site. The next phase would be to acquire the neighboring site, the neighboring lot, which was also owned by the Screw Factory, but it's for the most part, as far as we know, clean and not contaminated by the swale. Part of the swale is on one end of the property, but most, most of the property is cleared. So we're moving forward with that project, as you know, the plan is eventually to do some senior houses on that site after a screw. Next item, town council builds. I'm sure you've reviewed those by now, and most of the activity is due to all the major projects that we've been working on, and a few other problems that we've encountered. Last year, we ran, right now, we're, we used about sixty percent of the budget, and that's only taken us through our program. So we've gotta cut that, and I think that frankly, because a lot of the things that we've been working on are coming to conclusion, that we'll be able to do this, whether we'll run over or not, we'll have to go to a special town meeting and supplement, finance committee, we can't tell right now, but we'll do everything we can to keep those costs down. Last year, we ran over by more than fifty percent, and that won't happen. Both last, both last year and this year, though, were unusual years, given the Fall River IMA, the Amazon, the American project, Maricam projects, the SNS roadway improvements, Fall River Water Agreement, Silver Credits Agreement.
Republic.
Republic, yeah.
Corner in the head.
Yeah, oh yeah, municipal aggregation and employee issues, so all of those things, or most of those things are coming to an end in terms of involvement of our attorneys, so I think, I think it'll slow down. So, we'll be working on that. And finally, I just wanna call your attention to the fact that, of Maya, you all have one of these?
Yes.
You got it? Okay. Maya has offered the, an extension of our agreement with them, and I'll just read the D. Jack. The Town of Freetown is an important member of the Maya programs. Due to the overall success of our programs, we're talking about, we're talking about our insurance, inorganic property liability, health and dental programs, and your excellent loss history, we're able to offer you a renewal proposal for fiscal year 2017 and fiscal year 2018, which includes a rate change of zero percent for fiscal year 2017, and a rate increase of no more than two and a half percent for fiscal year 2018. We're pleased to offer this renewal proposal for both your property liability and workers' compensation coverages. Now, they have three hundred eighty-five cities and towns and other governmental units that they cover. They offered this rate, the zero, no more than two and a half, to only forty of their customers, and that's because we've done such a good job in terms of managing to not have to hit our insurances, and our loss history has been really, really good. So, this is, they want us to sign this agreement, or sign this letter, that will continue to participate with Maya, property liability.
The only, did you, okay, did you even talk to Maya at all?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so they're anticipating us signing this and bringing it forward, because this deadline was November twentieth, twenty fifteen.
Well, it's not the deadline, I mean, I talked to them with.
Okay, so you have had a conversation with them, and they will honor it, even though the deadline's passed?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to continue with Maya for the next two years.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve my line for the next two years of Maya's insurance.
Do you authorize me to execute?
Yeah, can I, can I just amend that? Can I add to that? Only if they will honor this proposal.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it needs to come back to the board, to the discussion.
I do them today, they know they are.
Okay, all right. So that's my motion.
All right, sure. Second in, and again, we have a motion made and seconded to, we have two years with Maya based on selectmen's chico's recommendations, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Take very quick.
Okay. Next on the agenda is to approve signed Solar Stop Agreement.
We already did that, we have to sign it.
Did we have a motion to sign it? Next on the list is approved slash discussed solid waste options for two thousand and sixteen. There was a bunch of information came over from this test pit on that, and we got settled more or less on wanting that team to be more competitive than the rest.
Well, there's, there's a lot of different, Kevin's still here, can you come forward, Kevin?
Yes.
There are a lot of different, we have, well, there are a lot of different factors that interfere to give a decision here, and while I think we should make this decision as soon as possible, it's not absolutely essential for you to do it tonight, we can discuss all of those aspects of it, because the, there are three, three players, CMass, where we are taking our track, and we have a preferential rate, Kevin, we were one of the first to sign with them back in the eighties, and so they, they are offering, you know, we're paying, what, twenty, is it twenty-six dollars now?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Thank you.
You got your COVID, Kevin. Those rates, those rates are jumping, and they're up in the sixties now. The CMass will offer us a ten-year contract with a signing at sixty dollars and with a two and a half percent escalator every year. So at the ten-year mark, or the five-year mark, it'd be at sixty-six twenty-three, and at the ten-year mark, it'd be at seventy-four ninety-three per ton. The Greater New Bedford Regional Records Management District, which is better known as Crepo Hill, is offering us sixty dollars to start, same thing, CMass, for the first ten months, and then, that being September through September, because we, you know, our CMass contract ends this September first. So that would take care of us for the, for that ten-month period, and in the next fiscal year, we'd go to sixty dollars again, they'd hold at sixty, while CMass goes at sixty-one fifty, and at the five-year mark, you would be at sixty-three, sixty-seven, and then ten years, you'd be at seventy-twenty-nine. So they will also, they've also offered, as part of their package, to, for us to participate in two hazardous waste disposal days. That's worth, that's worth, yeah, it's worth.
Yeah, that's huge.
It's worth between ten and fifteen thousand dollars.
Yes.
Huge.
And, so that's, that's important to note. Now, we know CMass is a waste energy facility, we know that, that Crepo Hill is a landfill operation, and occasionally, there's some problems with Otis there. And, is that?
Occasional.
Occasional, yeah. And the, the other, the other player, if you will, is, is the Bedford Waste Proposal. They call it, they call this project that they're building, this is ABC, the Bedford Ways, or Mike Camara. They're building a facility over, where they started to build, a facility over by CMass. It's gonna run across the street and probably a thousand yards down the road. That facility is called Zero Waste, well, we know waste zero, that's where we get our trash bags, this is Zero Waste, but it's a, it's the Bedford Waste that's doing the work, and they've offered us an agreement with, at, at sixty, was it sixty? Looking at, no, it doesn't.
Fifty-nine to first year.
Fifty-nine the first year.
Seventy-one, sixty-nine.
Working up to.
Seventy-three, sixty-nine.
Right. Okay, go back to the.
So which is, which is the bottom line? You know, we could talk about these numbers, some people.
Well, CMass, you know, CMass is, is, is not going anywhere.
No.
They don't have any problems, occasionally, they have a fire or explosion, and they, and they.
They don't have any problems?
They fix it. No, well, from a financial management standpoint, they're helping as they can be, and that's where we are now, so that, that's the most, that's the least problematic choice. The Greater New Bedford Regional Records Management District proposal is a good one, and it solves this, solves our problem with the hazardous waste. And.
What's your recommendation, Jack?
I gotta tell you about the third one. Waste, Waste Zero is problematic in that they're still trying to finance it. They were supposed to have their equipment in the building and being installed by now, they haven't.
So they really don't exist?
They, they don't exist physically. They have contracts with several communities, several on the Cape and some off Cape, north of us, but what they're doing, and those contracts are replaced, so they're taking their trash and finding a hole for it, so they're losing money, they gotta be losing money in this, in the current situation, so the question, they, they, that, that program would take all our trash and all our recyclables and turn them into bricks above the sites. The process, then, they would then sell those to burn plants up in Maine.
Well, isn't that so familiar?
Burn them for power, yeah. Now, how long are they, is the EPA gonna allow burn plants in Maine to create power? I don't know. The, so I think, unfortunately, they're, they're, they would be problematic, might be the best way, but we are now paying more to dispose of our recycling than our trash.
We're taking it on recycling, we're taking it on everything else.
There was like twenty-five.
City scrap is charging us now, or something, we're always.
However, when the Chinese economy fires back up again, there'll be recycling.
Well, that's true, yeah, so, and, but when's that gonna happen?
We had discussed something briefly today, when you look at the totals, how they go up every year, I had recommended only going five years.
I was gonna ask if you could.
And then, if you could, because there's so many alternatives out there, I think, and all this new, new ideas going around, and maybe that facility will be able to help us out, the one he was speaking about, and you don't, I don't think you wanna tie yourself down, because, yeah, because even Stop and Shop has come up with that anaerobic digester, we might have some new technology coming out that will help us, and we're not gonna be locked in.
We've all read all the proposals. You have one in mind you think is best for the town?
I like the idea of the Hazardous Waste Day, we, we wanna do it anyways, we have those grant funds, we're gonna apply them now to different areas, each company. I'd like the Crepo.
Yes, the Crepo Hill is the best deal. Financially.
It is.
And for recycling, for the hazardous waste, there's no doubt about it, but will they give us five-year contract?
Right, or, well, yeah, I wasn't even gonna go for that, can we do three with an option for two?
I don't think.
Three-year contract with an option for two.
I might, I don't think they'll buy that. They might buy the five-year.
You can ask.
Yeah, you can ask.
Doesn't hurt. At least we're all in agreement that Crepo Hill is the best deal.
It is the best deal, financially.
So can you find that out, and then at our next meeting, we can vote on that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And with the influx of stuff coming into them, can they assure us that we're not gonna get all kinds of complaints and voters and stuff? I, I think we'd get more complaints?
No.
What?
I, well, I think, I think they're gonna want us to be friendly neighbors, because eventually, they own property that's in our town.
Yes, they do. It's partly in our town.
They also own property that is fully in our town, but they don't use us Crepo Hill.
No, they don't.
Do you think that that's where they're gonna go?
Yeah.
Wouldn't be a bad idea to stay close to them.
Probably smart, yeah. All right, moving on. We got a plan, right?
Yep.
So next meeting, right?
Next meeting.
Yep.
Can you just find out if they're gonna put it, where they're gonna put that trash? Like, is it gonna be, I know we're saying Crepo Hill, and we're all, is it gonna be in the same location as they have now? Are they expanding? What, what are their?
I can, I can get, I'm sure they have a plan. The decisions are gonna be fun. But Scott Alfrance is, is very good. He's, he manages everything up there. He, he replaced Virginia, I can never say her last name. And uh, and uh, so I, I'll call Scott and I'll get their five- or ten-year plan.
Perfect.
And bring that, bring that with it for you too.
Okay.
All right, moving on. We have approved abatements from November two thousand and fifteen, April through June two thousand and fourteen, is submitted by the Fire Chief. Just running down here. One is total of forty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion made, seconded to approve the abatements from November two thousand and fifteen and April through June uh, two thousand and fourteen, is submitted by the Fire Chief. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have a letter from Janice Gurney.
Wait, is there two?
Yes, two.
Yes. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the abatement for um, November twenty-fifteen in the amount of forty-two thousand, six oh five fifty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, what do we got left, the fourteen one?
Nope, lost that.
Good, we're all set. Next on our agenda is a letter from Janice Gurney regarding her intent to remove one twenty-four County Road from Chapter sixty-one A in the town's rate of first renewal. Do we have to read the letter? Honorable Board of Selectmen, Janice C. Gurney, herein, hereafter of the owner, and current owner of real property located at one-two-four County Road, Freetown, Massachusetts. Herein the premises has executed a purchase-to-sales agreement with the premises to be sold on or about the summer thirty of two thousand and fifteen. Fear convenience, I have attached copies of the Freetown's office, Board of Assessor's agricultural or horticultural land tax liens recorded at Bristol County Flow River District Registry of Deeds, Acts twenty-six ninety-four, in Book twenty-eight fifty-six, page thirty-nine, on June seventeen nineteen ninety-seven, in Book thirty-two fifty-two, page five respectively. The owner hereby requests that the premises be removed from classification under Massachusetts General Law sixty-one A and request that the town release any right of first refusal it may have to the premises, and request that the town notify the owner, attorney thereof, of any amounts owed relative to the rollback property taxes. Thank you in advance for your attention in this matter. I can reach that. But any good questions or concerns, I'm happy to provide additional documentation if required. What's your pleasure? Do we wanna buy that land? I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
And entertain a motion?
Uh, entertain, I'll make a motion to um.
Refuse.
Yeah, I wanna get the wording from the bottom. Refuse the property at one twenty-four County Road um, from Janice C. Gurney.
With the various lots. There's wooden, there's wooden, there's like three lots or four lots. They're all part of the same.
Recorded at the Registry of Deeds in Book two, twenty-eight fifty-six, page thirty-nine, um, and Book thirty-two fifty-two, page five respectively.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded as read by Selectman Pacico regarding Janice C. Gurney's letter. Intent to remove one twenty-four from Chapter sixty-one A. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is a letter from Bryant Hill Farms. Get down to this one. We'll get there. Just scrolling down. Hundred and thirteen pages.
All right, I got it.
Dear Boards and Commissioners, the town of Freetown currently has an aggregational tax lien under sixty-one A on our eighty-eight acre parcel. Property located on Three Corey Drive in the sonnet, Assessor's Map two oh two lot twenty parcel two. We have bona fide, we have a bona fide third-party purchaser, purchaser for a ten-acre parcel subdivided from this land and a right to convert this portion of land to a disqualifying use. We understand that the town has thrust right of refusal to purchase this land prior to our sale. We have a signed purchase and sale agreement for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a ten-acre parcel of land. Further understand that we are responsible for paying a rollbacks tax in order to have the lien released from these ten acres. Please let us know if you choose to exercise your right of first refusal. If you do not wish to exercise your first right of refusal, please calculate our rollback tax to be. If you need any further information, please feel free to call me. Thank you for your immediate attention, Deborah A. Pegg. What's your pleasure on this one?
I make a motion that Selectman Baumgartner pony up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars so we can have a pocket down here.
And I am gonna use Selectman, Selectman say that's communion money to do it. He's still got it, by the way.
I make a motion that we, that we refuse the offer. Or we exercise our right to not uh, purchase the property.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we moved, and we have a mes, a motion made and seconded to exercise our right of first refusal, which we will. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Done. Next on the general, is the, next on the agenda is to vote and sign annual town election notices submitted by Town Clerk Jack Monroe. Motion to sign those things?
Yeah, but I think you're, you're gonna read what the motion.
You have to read them. I'll make a motion, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to um, sign the public notice for the Freetown Annual Town Election from Monday, April fourth, twenty sixteen. One, Selectman Board of Health and Personnel Board member, three-year term. One Assessor, three-year term. One Regional School District Committee, Freetown, three-year term. One Regional School District Committee, Freetown, one year unexpired. One Regional School Committee District, Lakeville, three-year term. One Cemetery Committee Member, three-year term. Two Library Trustees, three-year term. One Water and Sewer Commissioner, three-year term. One Planning Board Member, five-year term. Three Finance Committee Members, three-year terms, and one Housing Authority Member, five-year term. Uh, the nomination papers will be available in the Town Clerk's office beginning Monday, January fourth. Happy New Year.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second your motion.
I have a motion made and seconded as read by Selectman Pacico. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ally, do we have a meeting on the fourth of April?
Um, we can't. It's Election Day.
Yeah.
I have one before the election, and we don't typically do that. He's up to no good when he says things like that.
Yeah, I know.
Next on agenda, annual renewal of liquor and other licenses issued by the Board of Selectmen. I can read all of these, and we can do it in one home sentence. We wanna go to each individual.
No, we can read all of them. We can do it on one one.
Okay, we have applications for renewal of licenses, for liquor and other licenses issued to the Board of Selectmen. Number one, an all alcohol inn holder, Asonet Inn Incorporated. All alcohol package store, Asonet, Asonet Star Market, Inc., Circle K, K and E, and Liquor Incorporated. And all liquor veterans club, Freetown Memorial Post, number six-six-four-three BFW. And all alcohol restaurant, Independence Harbor, Inc., and the Nephew's Italian American Kitchen, Inc. Line and boat package store, Grandpa's Place, Inc., Prime Express. And entertainment license, Independent Harbor, Inc., the Nephew's Italian American Kitchen, Inc., Freetown Memorial Post, six-six-four-three BFW. Jukebox license, Asonet Inn, Inc., Freetown Memorial Post, six-six-four-three BFW, and the sale of second-hand merchandise XL recycling. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the liquor and other licenses.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve the liquor licenses and other licenses as read by the Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanna make a comment first. All these licenses, license renewals were reviewed for tax, outstanding taxes and so forth, and they all passed. Everybody is up to date, or have had some type of agreement with the town. All right, so I'll vote yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is the annual renewal of Class Two and Class Three motor vehicle licenses and other licenses by the Board of Selectmen. These have also been reviewed for taxes and like, right?
Yes, right.
So I'm gonna do the same thing. I'm gonna read them all again, versus each individual one.
Just add Pick and Pull and, and Bugsy Stevens to them as well, because they're not down there. I just noticed they're not down.
What, Class Three?
Are those Class Threes?
They're Class, Bugsy Stevens, I mean, Pick and Pull is also Class Three. Class Two and Class Three.
There's a Class Three.
It's in there, Ally, on, on the agenda.
Pick and Pull is a Class Two and a Class Three.
Oh, it's both, okay.
And what was the other one?
Oh, Bugsy Stevens is.
Yeah, Bugsy Stevens is there, that's why.
Oh, actually, they're both there.
Yeah, Mills Industries is there.
Yeah, they're both there. I didn't see him.
See you better than you thought.
Yeah, I am. I thought I missed putting them down there.
Class Two, a motor vehicle licenses. Bob's Motor Works, Cedar Street Garage, doing business as Euro Class Six. Clermont Auto Sales, Chuck's Import Village, Sandman Auto Sales, PJ's Auto Sales, Miller's Auto Sales, Evolution Auto Sales, Inc., CJ Auto Sales, Bowler's Garage, Jimmy's Used Cars, John's Auto Body and Sales, F and F Auto, JM Auto Sales, Main Street Gas and Auto, Nathan's Garage and Specialty Up. Class Three Motor Vehicle Licenses, J and T Auto Salvage, Westgate Auto, Hometown Automotive, Bug Stevens, Freetown Auto, Mills Industries, Inc., Big Wheels Truck Sales, East Freetown Auto Salvage, LLC, CSA, A Auto Parts. Graveyard License Renewal for Mills Industry, and an auctioneer's License Renewal for J and T Auto Salvage.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Let's turn this over to our illustrious Board of Health Chairman.
Here we go again.
Moving forward.
Good evening. Yes, we have one item on here, a discussion of proposed new health regulations with the Animal Control Officer, Lisa Podolski. And Lisa was here a few meetings ago, and uh, Lisa, come on up.
Did you kick my horse away?
What happened?
Why didn't you say that?
No.
Did you?
It's old.
No, but I just came from a call that was, of course, some dog call.
On my road?
Well, yeah.
And Lisa has proposed some revised regulations to the requirements of the state, to match the state. And I know the last time she was here, there was a couple of issues that she went back and she modified, and I think she's done a great job with the regulations that she's proposed.
I appreciate.
Great job.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to approve the animal control and sanitary standards set forth by the Animal Control Officer.
Second.
Oh, that's right. Oh, what you made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have, do we have to have a hearing now on this?
I don't know if we have to have a hearing, or if it has to go to town meeting, but those, those two things we should try.
I believe, yes.
How do we talk about that?
I believe when you, when you make a regulation, when you approve it, has to go, has to post it two consecutive weeks in paper. Have a public, at your next public meeting. If anybody has any input, at that time, they can be heard, and after that, you close out the meeting and vote.
And then it goes to town. Does it go to town meeting?
And then after that, no, and after that, we just take that paperwork, submit it to DEP, and they require it.
Okay.
I remember the last time you were talking about permits and things, and we had some people from, we had, we had some people from the town gallery. And I was approached by one of them afterward. He said, you know, the town, the state of Massachusetts, this was then, I think it was Mr. Dunrango, stated that the town of Massachusetts calls him every year. He said they wanna know how many head of cattle I got, how many of this, how many of that. Do they do that with all of our farmers, do you think?
I don't think they do. I've never heard of anybody from the state calling them.
So they call them every year, and they start out with.
I wonder if he's different, because I know he can do, he's some kind of agricultural, that's something I'll look into. I'm not sure.
I figured you might find that interesting.
Yeah, I do find that interesting, but I wonder if he falls under something a little bit different, because really, we don't have any cow farms, you know what I mean? And I know they can do agricultural burns and different, they have a few different rules over there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I do find that interesting. I'm gonna look into that, because I don't know.
How many head of everything that he had there?
Yeah.
Interesting. Hey, that's all I had. I figured I'd throw that out there.
If you have state permits or state licenses.
Oh, that's probably right.
All right. Like, I, I've dropped my state license, but when I had a state license for a stable, the Animal Rescue League, the, the State Animal Rescue League, they have state police powers. They come down to their inspection. So I would imagine if you had cattle, and you had any kind of state permits, I'm not, again, like you, I'm not that familiar with cattle. But I, uh, that might trigger something within the state where they would call you and, or come down and do an inspection, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Piper.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your input. Personnel.
No, he has one more thing.
This is a letter from Police Chief Carlton Abbott. It's regarding a drug collection unit. I'm pleased to announce that our police department's application to CBS Pharmacy for a drug collection box has been approved. Department was assisted in the process by Bristol County District Attorney's Office. The CBS Pharmacy, together with the partnership at drugfree.org, created an innovative community donation program through which police departments apply and receive drug collection units to help their communities safely dispose of unwanted medication, including controlled substances. The initiative is known as the Medication Disposal for Safer Communities Program, and recognizes the importance of removing unwanted, unused, or expired medication from the community in a safe and environmentally responsible manner. Our department will not be able to participate in drug collection events such as the National Drug Takeback Day. Law enforcement drug collection programs help with communities of unwanted medication that may otherwise be diverted, absorbed, or contaminated, or cause contamination to our water supply. With respect to the issue of diversion and the current opioid prices, it is important to remember that approximately seventy-five percent of the heroin addicts start out by using prescription drugs. This is according to a recent survey, which in part, which is part of a growing body of evidence that may, that many of today's heroin users are shifting from prescription pill addiction to heroin addiction. Many users, many users diverted through this program. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Carlton Abbott. So, the police department took the initiative to partner with CBS pharmacies, and we're gonna have the ability to. gonna have the ability to bring, people, at some point, we'll have the ability to bring in their drugs, unused drugs, and the police department will dispose of them.
I can't emphasize enough how important this is. You know, this is really where the drug problem and the opioid problem has started. I've been to several community events regarding this. I feel passionate about it. I have too many friends lose children recently, and I say children, twenty-four years old. So, you know, you don't think about it. You have those in, in your, in your, you know, you went to the doctor, they gave you a prescription, you kept it. Kids are just going in and taking them. They're selling them at the school. They're going to their grandparents' houses. They're taking them from their grandparents because they don't know. You know, the grandparents don't know. They're not paying attention. They're not using the drug anymore. So even if we, you know, maybe set something up with Carlton and the seniors to let them know how important it is to just get rid of this stuff, and I think it will take, at least it'll take steps towards trying to control this problem.
Something, yes. There's a great idea to enable the seniors.
Cause I don't think they understand. I, I just don't think they understand, so, anyway. Thank you.
It's Paul and I, by the way.
It's absolutely true that, I, I don't know a family that's not been touched by it.
It's awful. And we had another one a couple of weeks ago. They're, and it's thirty.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So, anyway.
Well, now I get to choose Selectman Pacico.
Thanks. All right. I have a letter from Carlton. I respectfully request that the board pursuant to authority conferred upon Mass General Law forty-one, ninety-one A, appoint Donald D. Bullock as a constable, effective, yeah, as of right now, to serve criminal process at the discretion of the Chief of Police in accordance with the applicable rules and regulations and policies and procedures, including Freetown Police Department Policy zero four seven, Constables. Please find also what this is, waiver and release, and a change of status form.
Motion to appoint Donald Bullock.
Do you have a sec? I have a motion to let them second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I see your next name.
Okay. Also, a change of status form for Taylor Odeski, as submitted by Chief Abbott, effective December nineteenth, twenty fifteen, on dispatch trainee to a plot time dispatcher from a rate of thirteen eighty-seven to fifteen eighty-one.
Motion.
Did Taylor learn from the best-
Fix of the tree. Yeah, not for me.
He learned at the feet of the master.
I make a motion to appoint Taylor.
I second that.
Okay. And also, appoint election workers, um-
You gotta call for a call.
Oh, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and appoint election work, I know, it's almost eight o'clock, two hours. Appoint election workers, Rita Lapree, Susan Freeman, Aronovski, Patricia Rushton, Peter Charlin, Rochelle Cox, Kenneth Carler. This is submitted by Jackie Brown, effective immediately.
Motion to appoint Paul.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You know, we were talking about how the increase, and we can keep this in the back of our heads, just maybe, maybe something worth a thought. We know that CMAS is gonna go up, right? And we know it's gonna go up significantly. If we can create a line item to kind of save that, save some money, put some money aside, so when it does come up, it's not such a big hit all at one time, so maybe we can make an extra line item in the budget this year. Okay? All right.
So that's gonna be, that's gonna take it back to the equation.
It's gonna come anyway. Right. So if we can stop putting money aside for that, then we're not hitting everything all at one time, so, all right. I'm trying it.
Ooh, are you done?
I'm, I'm way done.
Okay. All business. Dates for upcoming Board of Selectmen's meetings, January the eleventh, January the two five, February the eighth, February the twenty-second.
Okay, January eleventh. I won't be here. But that's okay, Kelly, I'm without me.
No struggle.
That's all right. I'll have a drink for you somewhere.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, everybody good at that? I'm good at that. Movie club goes in.
So listen-
All business.
Hopefully, we'll see everybody at the Christmas party.
Yes. All business. The water agreement. You want us to keep that as all business?
Oh, yeah, that has, yeah.
So, all right. Last night, our meeting went from six o'clock to quarter to nine. And tonight, six to five o'clock.
And last night, we got absolutely nothing done, and tonight, we got a whole different lot of things to accomplish.
Not really. We got different, well, you didn't. We had same trouble.
Yes. What's up, Jack? You good?
I maintain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Sadik, who have a second?
I wanna stay longer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is over. OPA.